City of Milton Common Council Meeting to Order Tuesday, July 5th, 2016 at 7:01 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The meeting was noticed here at City Hall, Piggly Wiggly and Dave's Ace Hardware.
Okay, item number two, Approval of the Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. Item number three, Public Comments Regarding Items Which Can Be Affected by Council Action. And we do have some individuals that would like to speak. And we have Connie Weeks.
Can I stand in front of that?
Sure.
I'm too short.
Can I have some information? May I?
Yep, absolutely.
My name is Connie Weeks and I'm a resident of Milton. At 602 East Madison Avenue, that little subdivision back in there that nobody knows is there. I've lived in Milton a couple of years. And before that, I lived in Jamesville for six, five years, and taught in Jamesville for thirty-three years. But the purpose of my coming tonight is just to let you know that I have a passion about government and about democracy. And I found out about this movement called United to amend. And in excellent fact, they've already passed a referendum on that. Okay. Movement is about is to get money out of politics. Everyone to understand that corporations are not people. Money is not free speech. We want our government to be open and transparent. And we want to know what's going on. And we don't want anything hidden from us. If money is donated, we want how much and who it's from. And right now, we think the cards are stacked against the people. So this movement called Milton United to amend is part of a countrywide movement. It did not start here. It started all over the United States. In fact, in Wisconsin, I believe there are forty-seven, is that right?
Seventy-five?
Oh, seventy-five. Oh, excuse me, seventy-five other communities that have already passed this amendment. And what eventually we hope will happen is that if you get enough states to get their legislature to pass it, that it will go to the Supreme Court and will get a little pressure on the Supreme Court to change Citizens United. What is it called? It's going to be called We the People? Or something, something on the order of that. Lost it, I don't know why that. But anyways, does anybody have any questions about what this movement is about?
What do city councils or communities, what are you talking about having them do? Or what have they done in the past?
Okay. Actually, you don't have to do anything. We just don't want to go behind anybody's back or look like we're doing it, you know, through the back door. We want everybody to know about it. And we would love your support because I think most people are in agreement with this movement. They think it is vital. They think it is necessary. And if we want to see government change for the better, we need to do something. It needs to come from the people up. Because I don't think it's been come from the top down. Waiting for a long time.
Could I say something?
Say.
Yes, so we're working on referendum because we're interested in what the people, primarily what the people want. In some communities, we'll have a referendum and then later on, the council will pass something saying they also support it. But it doesn't have to be that way.
We have to get, I believe, fifteen percent of the people voted in the last election from Milton for that to be, you know, accepted.
So when you say get, what does that mean?
I mean, we have to get signatures from fifteen percent of the Milton.
Fifteen? Fifteen percent of the people that voted in the last election would have to sign a petition in order for a referendum to be placed on a ballot?
Now, that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to go just to those people that voted in the last election because we can vote at anybody in Milton. But as long as we get, you know, fifteen percent of the public to go along with that, and we definitely plan to get more names of that. If I decide that we're staying above the number that we need, and we'll be working with later, we'll have to verify when we bring in the ballot, the signatures are correct. And so we'll try to pad it with extra people so we know that, you know, we're not going to miss anybody or get under our, you know, fifteen percent.
So you'll be doing this for the city and also for the township?
This is just the city of Milton.
Just the city that you are looking at at this time?
Because the city and township vote separately, correct?
Well, that's what I'm trying to be clear about.
What, we're just doing the city?
Thank you.
Okay.
No questions, but I'm aware of what you guys are doing and what communities have been passing. And I know it's been overwhelming, most of the time, well over eighty percent. I'm sure you guys are aware. If you're not, you can be now. Next Thursday, the county board will be discussing putting this on the ballot as a referendum for this upcoming election. So coming there and signing up to speak would probably be good.
We'll both be there. We've already told them. Yeah. So I'm, we're just hoping to get everybody's support. And we'll go around to the, and some of them are letting us put up our literature. That wonderful sheet of paper that you have is what we've been posting in some places. Haven't been to many places, but we do respect, you know, their right to say, no, we don't want it hanging there. And we will only do it if we are given their permission. Any other questions?
Thank you for coming and good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other speakers at this time, we will go to Approval of the Consent Agenda.
I would like to make one small addition because the approval of the minutes for the Community Development Authority are not listed here. I would like to have some corrections made to the May seventeenth CDA minutes. And since it's not on the agenda, I have to ask for next time?
Those changes have already been made. I saw the email and so it's been corrected.
Okay, because when I pulled them up, I didn't see it changed. But that's, I will look again.
Yeah.
But I would like that noted, that they are changed.
Anything else? Or can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Item number five, Discussion and Possible Action on 2016 Roadway Improvement Projects and Authorization to Seek Bids. Howie?
Okay. When you combine some of the TIF districts and some of our general fund money, there are some street projects that we're interested in getting, to be able to bid these out for this year, for in August, to have bids come back to council. These are on Chicago Street, Cerns Road, past John Paul Road, the Chicago Street close to the ethanol. And as you see, some of the other ones, bids over on Woodcrest Lane and also the Merchant Row parking lot on the north side of Merchant Row. We would like to get those bid out if approved by council so that we would get bids back by July 28th. And then they could go to the August 2nd council meeting for approval if we get acceptable bids. The money would come both from the general fund and from the TIF projects. Right now, there's no additional funding that has to be done to rebudget these projects. They'd all be within those funds that we have. And if approved, we could get these done, you know, this year yet, to be done, you know, before winter of this year. And these are some streets that we have received complaints about just because of the condition of them. The Cerns Road project would, most likely, the best way to do that would be an intergovernmental agreement with the township. And Al is working on that. And he would like to have that done, if possible, before the August meeting, you know, just to make sure for the bids to have that approved also. But he's working with Milton Township on that. And that would come back to council for approval in the intergovernmental agreement.
No, I was curious as to how, I realized that they were talking and I wondered what they had come to an agreement on, so it's not been decided yet.
No, and it might even come back to the, he probably would like to have it come back to the July meeting, you know, so that it would be done before any bids, you know, because we can't accept bids if it's not approved.
That was my curiosity of how it worked.
So when I said August, he'd actually like to have that, if possible, done before July. And the agreement would be that, otherwise, there's an annexation, but that just takes longer. So, but with the intergovernmental agreement, it would be a maintenance by the city. And then, if possible, you know, well, the way to do that would be, we would get what funding they get from the state for maintenance for that. So, and then you don't have to exchange land or boundaries.
We will wait for an update.
Right, and that would come to council anyways for final approval.
Howie, going back to my question in Public Works, why are we not looking at sidewalks for the residential part of Chicago Street? I thought that we had a plan that as we were doing curb and gutters, that the sidewalk was going to be incorporated in those areas. And this, if this is a TIF, I'm just kind of wondering.
Well, right now, the funding for it was just for the resurfacing. And just the sidewalk in that area would just add quite a bit more cost to it. We were trying to get the basic street work done that we had received, you know, as part of the complaints on and stuff, just to get that finished anyways, for both the residents and the through traffic. So at some time, a sidewalk bid, you could bid out, you know, actually, if you wanted in the spring or something. And you might just get, you know, I don't know if you get a better price, but sometimes, and Gary, you could add too, if you combine a small section of sidewalk with a street project, when it's not a lot of it, sometimes the price goes up a little bit. So you might want to sometime just consider bidding that out separate. But you can also bid that whenever you want, have that bid out, the sidewalk.
Okay, because that, it just seems to me that if we, if we're having that much increased traffic there, that that's probably should be part of the, part of our upcoming plans is to get a sidewalk in for those people.
Yeah. Right now, we didn't have it on this plan.
Right.
But we can put it on a different one, so.
Can we add it to next year's, to the list?
Or if you have a different, or if you have a different TIF project, we could add it to that, you know, as an alternate on a different bid or something too.
Okay. Because I know that the times that I have walked up and down that street to talk to the residences for the different events, people drive very fast through that area. So I think that we do need to put it somewhere in the upcoming project. You would be the best to decide where.
Well, and we can, you know, put it on capital improvement plans because we're going to do that sometime in the next, hopefully before budget. And then, but then, like I said, we can just add it to, if you have a different, bigger project with some more sidewalk, add it on to that.
Okay, is there any other further questions? Otherwise, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary budget, Public Works Resolution 2016-21.
Oh, and, oh, actually, Linda, this isn't, the resolution was from the Public Works meeting.
Oh, sorry.
This one is just to, it would just be to improve the authorization for the, yeah, authorization for the projects.
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number six, Discussion and Possible Action on Amendment to the Class B Beer and Class B Liquor License Junction Pub.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm curious, why, why did this issue a licensing come directly to the council instead of going to Personnel and Finance?
I don't know. I did not do the Personnel and Finance agenda. So I don't know if it was put on here because Personnel and Finance would vote on it and then everybody from Personnel and Finance is on the city council and then they would vote on it again. So maybe we can go.
I'm not exactly sure why this was on the submittal form. So was there any conversation between you and Al? Was this a timing issue?
There was. He said he tried to get it through this week, this month.
Okay, all right. So it was, it was more that we were trying to get it before the next person, we were trying to get it done faster.
Right.
And we don't have to have PNF. So my guess is Al was putting it here because this is where it would have to come anyway.
And this is something that we were, did we request this?
Yes.
Okay.
We asked for more information when we voted on it last.
Okay, all right. So based on our request, you have submitted more information.
Yes, and we are not going to apply for a license at the new property on 106 Merchant Row. This is just an amendment of the Junction Pub license to serve on the patio that will go between Frederick's and the new building.
Did everybody have a chance to review this information that was submitted, that we asked for?
I have a question on the serving of patrons in the patio. Is Junction Pub going to serve liquor to patrons out there?
They will be the only licensed establishment there to serve alcohol on the patio.
Are you going to keep the patrons straight?
When you leave.
Who's from Frederick's and who's from?
Frederick's is going to be closed off, that whole entire front, Vesterbeil's going to be basically a hallway with another separate entrance into the restaurant with a sign on the inside stating, no alcohol beyond this point inside the restaurant.
Scott, have you looked at this?
Yes. I guess one of my questions is, is there going to be serving taking place in the patio or are they going to be served in the pub and brought out?
I would like to do both. Have a server out there.
Okay.
You know, I want it to be someone out there to keep an eye on every, you know, obviously. I just don't want it random. But, you know, if someone comes in, grabs a beer and wants to walk outside and sit at a table, you know.
The way it is now, you have to come out either front door and walk down the sidewalk. There is no outlet from either building to get to your.
There will be if this is approved.
There will be.
At the five o'clock meeting, I took some pictures. They're on the, they were on the agenda.
Did you look at those pictures?
I looked at the, I was looking at the thing as it's, as it sits and I don't see a doorway anyway.
If you can look at those pictures, you'll leave the Junction Pub and walk through a hallway with a separate door to your right.
One question I have, and I can't talk. At one point, you were going to have an upstairs patio for small cars?
A rooftop deck at one time, four or five years ago, correct.
And so that has just gone completely?
Engineers, with all the beam work they were going to make me do, it was, it was just, I would have.
So that's, that's gone by?
That's gone by.
And it's been replaced by this?
Correct.
That was, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah. I don't, the rooftop was just too costly to do. I mean, it was.
Weird. Oh, that was a decision that you've made?
Correct.
Have you gone for approval for the hallway from the state?
Yeah, well, I talked to Howie about the hallway. It wasn't really an issue.
From the state, they said it was kind of like current, what they have. So they were okay, as long as all the exits are there. As long as you can exit out, they seem to be okay with it. So, we can recheck again, but they.
It just doesn't seem to be that way.
Yeah.
Did you specifically talk with someone at the state or did you have an email or how did you correspond?
I talked, I talked to her at the state about it.
Okay.
But I can recheck again, but she seemed to be okay with it.
Shar says it's okay.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
So you're okay if Shar says it's okay? All right.
That's kind of, that's who we talked to.
So basically, aside from everything that you wanted to do in the last years and prior to the previous meeting that we looked at, your updates for us are your, is the entryways that we have to show how people will be going out to the patio area. And then they will also have, you are thinking that you will be serving alcohol there and inside, but it's all, from this new information, what I'm seeing is that this is all one entity. It's not the patio business and the.
Well, I was told to lease the property of MLMS LLC from Kamori Inc., which is the Junction Pub, which I do have a lease now to make it kind of one entity. And I think, Mark, you told Dan maybe that was the way to go, or told Al that was the way to go?
Yes, as I indicated at the last meeting, in order for any of the three entities to be able to have an alcohol license in the patio area, there needed to be consistency or need to be the same entity. You couldn't have one, more than one entity leasing, using that area. There'd be, it'd be one entity controlling it. And so if the, if Kamori Inc. is going to be having an alcohol license description that includes the patio area, then it needs to have the ability to control that. It can either then own it or it can lease it. And so that was, those were the two options that any of the entities had. And I guess you're indicating that you have a lease tonight that you can file with the council so they can see that that would be, that requirement would be met. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
You said if we approve that, you were, excuse me, you're going to put a door in? Which, which building would this door?
Well, there's already a door between the Junction Pub and Frederick's. And there's actually, the front of, the original building, which is Frederick's, they added a little lean-to, a little, it's like a Vesterbeil. What I would do is wall that off with a separate entrance locked because Frederick's is only open twenty-seven hours a week. So it would be basically a hallway straight through the front of the building.
And then there would be a fencing?
Oh, yes. We, I've already been approved for all the fencing and stuff through plan commission, I do believe.
It seems to me that we have been given the information that we requested and that Mike and Lori have dotted their i's and crossed their t's. And I will make the recommendation that we approve the amendment to the Class B and Class B liquor license for Junction Pub Kamori Inc. to include the outdoor patio dining area as part of the licensed establishment for the, for the business.
Is that with including the door?
They already have a door. It's on their plan.
I'll second.
What I'm concerned with is, are you going to have a warm-bodied bartender out there anytime that it's being served?
It'd be more of a server type deal. There wouldn't be a bar out there. It'd be just like a server waitress.
So it's out of the line of sight of your bartenders?
I guess it would be. But they're all licensed bartenders, correct? They're, I mean, they're, it's like any pat, I mean, there's many towns that have patios between buildings and I think it's very common.
Can you see where's this door going to be?
It's unique to, well, like you just said, it's not unique concept-wise, it's unique to us. You know, the city of Milton doesn't currently have a setup that's similar to this.
Well, I would, I would say that the red zone does and that possibly Cligs does. They have a patio off to the left, you know.
Sure, yeah, the patios are not unusual. It's, it's having the three entities and having to build a separate access and it's complicated somewhat legally, as Mark has weighed in on. I am, I am curious to see how it's going to work. I am not going to say I oppose it.
I guess I'm very uncomfortable looking at, you know, and the, these whole sizes in the fence look like you pass a pier through, but that's just my, from the picture.
I've had, I've had the same pants in front of the Junction Pub for five or six years.
Okay.
Every other establishment, licensed establishment has very similar situations. I mean, you could throw it over an eight-foot wall if you want to get something outside of it.
Yeah, I concur with that, his position on that as well. I don't, I don't see that being any different than any of the other patios that we've already approved.
Is this, is this?
Could you describe the location of the door for Maxine?
The door will be on the north side of Frederick's, on the very front, almost at the sidewalk.
Were this white?
Yes, it'll become, it'll come out right there, exactly. And there'll be a fence right on the sidewalk line.
Okay. There's a motion in a second. Are, is there any further questions or discussion?
I'm happy to see an addition like this down at Junction Square.
It's nice to see that area having improvements. It's been vacant and non-use for a long time. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you move on, a couple meetings ago.
Is this something on the agenda or?
I just have a question I wanted to ask.
Should it be here or under?
Well, it gets under this licensing issue.
So I just want the court to weigh in on it.
As long as it's, I think he's, Dave's indicated it's in conjunction with this particular item.
Oh, okay. All right, I wasn't. I wasn't clear. I thought it was something that was, that was different than this.
In pertinence, the question I asked when we started here, we had asked two meetings ago, Mark, have you looked at the effect that Act 10 had on Personnel and Finance having authority on liquor licenses? Did you come up with an opinion on that?
Yes, I believe that we had provided some information on that to the, to the city.
Al didn't give it to me.
It has not reached the council.
I'll check on that though, because I know that that had been requested and there was research done on that. So I'll just check on that, make sure that if it hadn't, for some reason, which I don't know why, that it definitely will be here within the week.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe it happened before there was a death.
Yes.
So I think we need to let Al have his time off. That's already approved. Okay, item number seven. Next meeting, July 19th, 7:00 PM. Number eight, general items.
I have a general item. I was wondering if we know anything about how the program is going with the community garden and the food pantry? Have you heard anything about that?
Well, he's, he's actually, he got a little bit delayed on some things, but he's building the shed out there right now. You mean for out of, for that? And so the shed's being done and he's planted his garden, so it just doesn't, any time for harvest today. There's, all the gardens are full, they're all rented, but it hasn't, nothing's being harvested yet, so.
Great. And then my other question is, I was told this weekend that Jenny has been told that ethanol is not being inspected except for once every five years from the DNR. And I think that we need to take a very serious look at that. I think ethanol needs to have a DNR inspection a lot more than that. And Dave, I think that you can, I'm sure that on our original plans, then.
Right, actually, what we're, that's already in the works of being handled. We're going to look at the consent decree and review it and see what it says in it. And if it says something differently, then we are going to notify in writing the DNR so they make sure they have that current consent decree. Great. Perfect. Thank you. Anything else? Under general? Okay, let's just skip the team-building exercise since Al is gone. Item number 10, Mayor and Elder Person Reports. I think the Fourth of July weekend, which was a very long weekend, was very successful. We had lots of people in town, lots of fun, lots of fireworks throughout the city. Um, we had lots of people in town, lots of fun, uh, lots of fireworks throughout the city. So I just wanna thank everybody that volunteered, um, especially our sweat volunteers for the parade, and the Lions Club for the, the bike, and all of the nonprofits that were up at, uh, Schilberg Park. Um, it was another successful event, and good bands and good food. And the library was up, up there too, so. Um, staff reports, or any elder per, we'll go to elder person. Linda?
Yes, um, I just wanted to, um, put a big shout-out for the Milton Area Veterans Monument. Um, although we had the ceremony for this fourth, and the park is very much established, I just wanna remind people that they can still purchase bricks in honor and memory of their loved ones. And you can get those applications up at City Hall if you talk to INGA. Um, and then I also just wanted to, um, put a shout-out there for the Gathering Place. There is a, and for you football people, there is a motivational speaker who is, his, her name is Sandy Sullivan, and she is going to be at the Gathering Place at Wednesday, July 13th at 6:30. Um, she worked with Vince Lombardi and the Green Bay Packers, and she's got a lot of, um, a lot of interesting things to talk about, how, working with him. And like I said, that's Wednesday, July 13th at 6:30. Um, and then we have Flowers and Fireflies. And I have to tell you, I went to that last year, so you've got to make reservations, because it's really nice. Thursday, July 21st from 5:30 to 7:30. And so contact them. And then we also have another concert coming up. So look on the, um, website for the Gathering Place, so you can see all the stuff that's going on. They've got some new things happening, so date things every day. Oh, and also, I just wanna let you know that on tourism, I have asked the Tourism Committee to look at an event for the 50th anniversary of the Milton Junction and Milton coming together as one entity. So keeps, if you have any ideas, this is next year.
City staff have been talking about it for a while, so, yeah. Nancy?
One of the wonderful events that happened this weekend was that there's the first tour of the library renovation, so we could go through and look at the construction. There is another tour scheduled for July 9th. There are two tours. I think it's two of, two and eleven. Check with the library. I could be misquoted, but there are two tours on July 9th. Go through, it's cool. It really is, um, when you, when you see what you remember is the paneling in City Hall, and you see what it is now, it is very dramatic. Do try and go on July 9th.
Thank you very much, Nancy. Ryan?
Don't have anything. Yeah, the item that Linda mentioned, the United Ethanol deal. I got a call, uh, this weekend from Jenny Goodman. And, uh, she said it was just unbelievable. She hadn't seen it this bad in years. So she said she'd called the DNR, and she gave me the number and the name of the guy she talked to, and I called him, because Brian Barber is retired. The guy I talked to turns out to be his supervisor. They have yet to fill that job, so they don't have anybody to investigate these things. We had a less than cordial conversation, and he suggested that maybe, he said he was gonna call United Ethanol, but he's asked if I would call, and then we compare the answers we got. I did. I talked to Chad, their operations guy, and I got the usual, "All is well. Everything's in the green. Everything's operating properly." And we went out and got a faint odor out there on New 59. But he said cargo was terrible. I said, "Well, did you go over on Old 59?" But the Goodman's, "Yeah." "Did you smell cargo over there?" "No." Okay. So I, uh, when I called, uh, or the supervisor from DNR called me back, he said, uh, they acknowledged the odor. They had to make three process changes to cut it down. One piece of equipment wasn't even turned on. And they had to alter, be two other alterations in their process. So in other words, he lied through his teeth. And that's, that's not uncommon. But like you say, uh, fight with their violation history for them to be sitting there and not expect a, an, uh, inspection for five years. The guy, the, the DNR guy said, "Well, federal government only requires us to do it every five years." He said, "No, that's not the way I understand it. You have to have it done a minimum of every five years. That's not saying you can't go in here tomorrow." And I said, "As far as I understood, the settlement, there would be more frequent inspections." Well, he wasn't sure of that. Well, I asked for his supervisor's name and telephone number. He gave me his name. He was reluctant to give me his telephone number, but that, but that's no big deal. I mean, guy works for the DNR, I can find him. But that, that agency is just absolutely pathetic.
It's really, really been significantly hurt by the state's budget cuts, and I did follow up with Jenny, and things did get better, thank goodness. But that, we're certainly gonna be in contact with the DNR to make sure that they understand what their requirements were when we did their agreement, so. And thank you, Dave, for the time you spent following up on it.
It's not like I got a lot of other things to do.
Jeremy? Maxine?
Uh, yes, I also got a call from Jenny saying about the smell, and I have been out there, and it does smell. Uh, I also got calls about fireworks, and I was hoping that we could look into, for next year, between fireworks and bonfires in the driveways. I mean, there are really fires, and a lot of people are, the, the fireworks, they had shot way up in the air. And so I thought maybe for next year, we could look into that.
Do you, do we not, we have ordinances, right, against fireworks, and it's complaint-based, correct?
Yes, correct on both counts. And we were, we probably, at one time, had four or five different complaints stacked at various times this weekend. We tried to get to as many of them as we could, so I don't, it's, it's not that our ordinances are lacking. It's not that our enforcement is lacking. Maybe it's an educational issue, or maybe doing some pre-work ahead of time, but figuring out how to make it better, because this is my first fourth, so I don't have anything to gauge it by. But if it was worse than it's been in years past, then we should probably be a little more proactive next year.
And I personally educated some people in the parking lot across from Rocky's when I was having pizza there. And they were, they were very, very receptive to my education.
That's what I think. Some of the people that have maybe moved into town don't realize that they can't, you know, they shouldn't, but, um, and my concern was there were so many cars sitting there, and, and they were doing it right by the gas tanks, the cars in the road and everything. And they wanna put their house on fire, that's fine, but I don't want mine, 'cause it was all coming onto my house. And the neighbors, the ones that called me, said the same thing, that they, they were shooting so far up in the air, and all the sparks and stuff were landing on their roofs, and so.
And, and I will say that while the season is waning, you know, we, there could probably still be fireworks yet in, in the coming weeks. And so I do encourage people to call us through the 911 center and the business line there, and we'll be happy to respond to any of those complaints and help with that ju, education, too.
But we have new neighbors that have moved in from distance, and my poor neurotic dog is just wanting us to be better educated and don't destroy the dogs of the Milton City.
Understood.
Okay, staff reports. Chief of the Joint Fire Department.
I have absolutely nothing.
How did the hot dog sale go?
Um, I have not heard the exact toll, but they thought about a thousand dollars that they made.
Yeah, when I looked, there was like a huge line out in front.
It was, it was well-taken for this year.
Could you just kind of address the fires too? Did you have fire calls over the Fourth of July from bonfires and grill fires? No? If they, if you did, would they have been charged?
All depends on. It all depends on what the circumstances were. I mean, if it's an accidental fire, then it's, it's not. But if they are setting off fireworks and cause a fire, then it would be, but we had no complaints at all from any of that. We had more, we had several ambulance runs, but no fires.
Chief of Police Department.
And, and I, just to clarify, I think Maxine's referring to a recreational fire, um, and then gauging whether or not that recreational fire is compliant with the ordinances that allow it within certain parameters. From what she described to me, it didn't seem like it fell within those parameters, but.
I just feel that we ought to be able, you know, keep this in mind, and then next year, get out the information that the fireworks, that they're illegal, and that they're, you know. But people hate to call up and complain about their neighbors doing it, so.
We could have a theme of being kind to dogs.
Indeed.
Anything else, chief?
Me, chief? Yes, I have two things. Coming Saturday is our next Coffee with the Cops event, uh, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the New Quick Trip. And, um, hopefully, some people will stop out. I'm gonna try to make this not about me anymore. I'm gonna try to get my staff there. So I have several officers who are gonna join me as well, and hopefully, people come out and, um, come see us, have a conversation. So that's from 9:00 to 11:00 this Saturday at the New Quick Trip. And then the second thing I wanted to mention, almost on the same theme as we were discussing at the end of the last meeting at Public Works Committee, that we should get going on our Public Safety Forum idea that got brought up during the Ad-Hoc Committee Council discussions. Um, and so, um, Linda's suggestion was we try to do that sometime before school starts. So I'm gonna take point on that, and we'll see if we can get a date scheduled sometime in August, and start to get all our stakeholders involved in that, and see if we can get some community members to share some thoughts with us in that environment, too.
City Clerk, Deputy Treasurer? Director of Public Works?
Um, just the next brush collection starts July 11th.
So if we collect it, they don't have to burn it in their backyard?
Right.
Okay, no library, no finance director. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed?